Good evening, welcome to tonight's Town Council meeting here in Council Chambers. Today is Monday, May 1st, 2017. It's a little bit after 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance, please join me. Agenda item number two, roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair.
Present.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor DePietro. Counselor Estrada.
Present.
Counselor McKenzie.
Present.
Counselor Miana.
Present.
Counselor Steve.
Present.
Seven present, one deleter absent.
Thank you. Agenda number three, considering except Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, April 24th, 2017.
So much.
Take on any discussion, any abstentions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present, seven zero. Agenda number four, Subcommittee Reports, A, General Government, Counselor Clements.
I do not have any minutes this evening. It's a pleasure, and we do have a meeting on Wednesday evening, 7:30 in the Veterans Room, and the one agenda item is to discuss the, and hopefully recreate, the Town Manager's Evaluation Form. Please join us.
Okay.
The budget meeting is set for May 15th, Monday, May 15th, that's at 6:30, I believe, in the Veterans Room as well. Thank you.
Thank you. B, Department of Public Works, Counselor Mina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't have any meeting minutes to read, but I do have a meeting scheduled for May 4th at 7:00 PM regarding the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we did have a meeting on the 24th. I've got fairly long, fairly long minutes here, so I'll just kind of summarize them. But it was primary, it was budget-related with library, Veterans Services, Recreation, Bay Path, and the public schools, and the Community Center. And in attendance were a whole bunch of us, so I'm not going to read the list. We opened up at 6:35, and I asked if anybody objected to rearranging the posted agenda to take up shorter budget items first, and nobody did. With the library, we, the budget was largely level-funded with some small adjustments, mostly step increases for staff. The book line item rose to meet the state's minimum spending requirement, which is 15% of the municipal appropriation, and already includes 40 grand from the trustees. So, and she's mentioned that she's already working on the library strategic plan, which is what was based in part on the 238 responses to the recent survey that some of you may have participated in. There was a little bit of talk about repairs, and how the fact that they're going on at this point to do a scope of services for interior work in the near future. Then Jackie Ryan made a motion to recommend the library budget of $516,207 to the Council for Ratification. Martine Che seconded, and it passed unanimously, five to zero. For the Veteran, the Community Center, Veterans Budget and Recreation are all lumped together, but they're actually separate budgets, so I took them apart. Community Center, Mr. Tremblay noted his budget has changed very little, there are some upkeep costs for the RMV site, which got a new heating system last year and got new lights the following weekend right after this meeting. Ms. Ryan recommended the Community Center budget of $102,053 to Council for Ratification. Counselor McKenzie seconded, and it also passed unanimously. The Veterans Services, Mr. Tremblay said that this covers 2,700 in veterans and memorial day activities, grave flags, and other items, and he now has 14 veterans claiming services, paid May invoices, but will probably need a small transfer of 1,500 to 2,000 to cover June. Budgeting for this is a little tricky because needs-based, so it changes frequently, and it's also 75% state reimbursed. Counselor O'Clair moved to recommend the Veterans Budget of $142,700. Jackie Ryan seconded, and it passed unanimously. Recreation, Steve Roenfeld noticed the biggest changes were due to increasing minimum wages for the, for the summer program workers. Jackie approved, made a motion to recommend the Recreation Budget of $41,585. Counselor O'Clair seconded, and it also was unanimous. For Bay Path, John Lefleche and Dean Ayakabuchi provided lengthy PowerPoint presentations, which will, which I've only noted here, but they'll also be on file with the records if anybody's interested. He, Dean noted that the state's foundation aid has traditionally been in, been based on 1% to 2% inflation, which is nowhere close to the real growth rates, and especially for healthcare costs, which was 9.5% this year. But the recent Foundation Budget Review Commission at the state level recommended changes, which will begin this year, including higher inflation rate, equity components, and a variety of other funding that should help even things out a little. Bay Path Chapter 70 is rising, the minimum contribution is up a little, and net school spending is also up, grand total of 293,790, which is still a very small percentage of their budget. But for the first time, this, for this time, for the first time in 17 years, the district is asking towns to pay some more than their required minimum, an additional 200,000. That's because Bay Path is very close to its state limit of 5% below the required spending, and if they were to fall below that figure, it would risk losing state aid. To ease the town's burden, it's taking $308,58 from its excess and deficiency account, which is the equivalent of the town's free cash, where the school is approaching the state's maximum of 5% in that account, too. So regarding Southbridge specifically, our number of students in the student body is 191, which is 86 kids below the 2011 peak, although it's up from last year, and we still have a waiting list. We've got 44 freshman seats this coming year, but 74 Southbridge kids have already applied, and several of them will probably be able to get to go, since some towns don't fill their seats. Tuition costs, we talked a little about tuition, and tuition costs varying by town. Southbridge pays $5,844 a student with a cake, the state kicking in the remainder of, to make up about 15,000 total. The building project is nearly complete, there's a few punch list items going. When the state ought to be finished, it's sometime soon. When that happens, they expect to get back about the 5%, the 5% the state's withholding, and they hope to be able to use some of that money for, for some additional parking, and leaking underground storage tank replacement, and a couple of other smaller things. But even if they can't use it, they won't be able, they don't want to come back to the town for more money. Let's see, so they, Jackie Ryan moved to recommend the budget of $1,116,255. Counselor McKenzie seconded, and it was unanimous. And then the Southbridge Public Schools also did another PowerPoint, which, if anybody's interested, it'll also be with the minutes. And let's see, she said that this year they're doing zero-based budgeting, as, and that she said the process is moving us closer to the vision of the turnaround plan, but we're not there yet. She foresee is doing so for the next few years, but doesn't necessarily mean that zero-based budgeting will be going on forever. Among other things, there's a whole bunch of changes that are going on this year, more investment in music and arts, a new dual-language program that's intended to be carried forward through the grades with the goal of graduating kids that are fully bilingual, and that's going to be open to students by lottery. A revised compensation model for teachers, which eliminates traditional steps in favor of merit raises based on, merit raises based on competence, not longevity. Establishing in-class libraries in all English-language arts classrooms, hiring a family community engagement director, adding a half hour to the school day with another half hour next year, further development of the Southbridge Academy, and a bunch of other things. The latter has seen participants beginning to become, really become students, she said, and has helped the middle high school, because they were causing most, about 50% of the discipline referrals last year. In time, she hopes to open the academy to other communities on tuition basis, but we have a lot to do before that happens, including getting some approval. There was some discussion on the compensation plan, with Ms. Ryan noting the union had concerns about it. Dr. Huzenga agreed, saying that the administration met with the union and negotiated how to go forward. The current system is based on a sense of entitlement, she put it, with teachers getting the same raises whether they're, were good at teaching or not over the course of 12 years. In the new system, a stellar teacher can hit maximum pay in six years, and they're offering $15,000 line item to help teachers get micro-credentialing as an incentive to continue education. Martine Che mentioned, or wondered how having a lot of teachers excel at once would affect the budget, and how having advanced degrees is affected. I asked about how they're, how they're reviewed. Dr. Huzenga said that the latter doesn't, doesn't matter as far as pay goes, and actually that phrase, by that I mean advanced degrees. To get raises, teachers have to get exemplary, which is top 3% to 5%, or proficient ratings on reviews, and the budget's based on a three-year model projection of how many are likely to do that. Let's see. Mr. Sanangelo mentioned that he likes the concept of the new model, but he's concerned about the long-term sustainability, and dislikes the idea of potentially cutting other areas to make it work. Dr. Huzenga noted she's starting a teacher recruitment development program with Worcester State, Family Resource Center at Eastford School, a food pantry, a food pantry and clothing closet, and is working with the hospital. It looks like we might be getting some more state aid this year, but Karen Heinauer noted that the new charter school will probably end up consuming any extra we get, since that was projected to cost our town about 200 grand this year, but is trending toward 260 at the moment. There was a bunch of other, a bunch of other minor things talked about, and let's see. I asked about the poor MCAS scores and where they're going, and Dr. Huzenga mentioned that if our internal assessments translate to state assessments, we'll be seeing a significant bump up, that this is the first year for MCAS 2.0 and other significant changes in the classrooms. Mr. Sanangelo said the budget matches his recommendations, largely because there'd been consistent communication between the town and the schools. Jackie Ryan moved to recommend the $26,786,735 budget. Counselor McKenzie seconded, and it passed unanimously, and then the meeting adjourned at 8:50. And I have no meetings scheduled.
Thank you. D, Planning and Development, Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have no meeting minutes, but on the, May 4th, which is Thursday, I have a Planning and Development meeting at 6:30 PM in the E-Race Conference Room.
Okay, thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, through you. We did have a meeting on Thursday, April 27th, 2017, at 6:30 in the Veterans Room. The meeting was quite lengthy. I don't have the full meeting minutes available just yet, still working on them, but I will summarize quickly the meeting now. The agenda item, the first agenda item was to discuss the Police Chief's recommendation to promote Detective Robert M. Salisbury to the rank of Provisional Sergeant effective May 14th, 2017, and entertain a motion to recommend to Council for confirmation. During the discussion, the Police Chief, and I'm sure that he will reiterate everything tonight, spoke very highly of, of the candidate, and also explained that it was a budgeted position. He had somebody stepped down, and this is going to be a replacement for that role, so it is not an additional line item in the budget, or anything like that. The agenda number two was to discuss the Police Chief's recommendation to appoint Eric A. Raymond of Monson, Massachusetts as a permanent full-time police officer for the Town of Southbridge effective upon successful completion of all medical and physical testing as required by the Human Resources Division, Civil Service, and to entertain a motion to recommend to Council for confirmation. The Police Chief also discussed that this is a, this is a position that is going to be replacing a recent retiree, it is budgeted, and he spoke very highly of this candidate as well. He will speak more of that as the agenda item comes up tonight. And then the agenda item number three, Presentation Discussion of Possible Regional Dispatch, discussion ensued for several hours over the, the possibility of the regional dispatch with the towns of, with several of the surrounding towns, including Charlton and Oxford. The end result of that discussion was that we will be postponing until an additional meeting through PPP, and we will be discussing it more on the town agenda on the 22nd, and that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Announcements, I just have two, three this evening. First, it's May 13th, the Forever Annual, the Third Annual Forever-A-Pioneer Three-on-Three Basketball Tournament. It's held in the honor of Jamie Ortiz. It's going to be Saturday, May 13th, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. They're looking for adult basketball teams, and also youth basketball teams. It's going to be at the old high school gymnasium, and again, this is to raise money for the scholarship fund that they provide a student in Southbridge High. The second announcement, I just want to, we, we've received the official flyer for the Southbridge Hispanic Festival and Parade, which will be held June 24th, 2017. This parade will start, there's, the parade will start at 10:00 AM, and then the festival will start at 1:00 PM, and that's going to be held, the festival will be held at McMahonfield on Drescher Street. This is being brought to you by many different organizations, and they have acquired a pretty, pretty popular dude in, in Felix Tito Trinidad, a former boxer, a champion from the island of Puerto Rico. He will be here to celebrate this event. So we invite you to come, this is, so you can understand the Hispanic culture, there's going to be a lot of vendors, ethnic foods, community awards, raffles, cornhole tournament, live music, moon bounces, carnival games, you name it, it's a complete package, and that's going to be on June 24th, 2017. And the next, next announcement that I have is just, I've received a couple phone calls, and I received two emails in regards to question one, that's going to be on the ballot come June 13th. Some, some folks have come to me with concerns, questions, confused. Question one, I need to reiterate, is not being sponsored by the Town of Southbridge. The signs are deceiving, it says "Southbridge First." I have issues with that, but that's okay, that's not my role, that's what the petitioner wants to do, but the signs are deceiving, at no point in time does it mention who or what question one is all about. It just states, "It's your town, you know, you make the decision." But again, question one is the Casella question. It's the future expansion of Casella, whether the town wants to support it. Again, we all, eight of us on this council have different opinions on this matter, but again, I just wanted to reiterate to the public that question one is not a sponsored or endorsed question. This is simply, Casella brought a petition forth, and by law, we have to put it on the ballot. So they've done their due diligence, and we've done our due diligence. But there will be other ballot questions that are sponsored by this Town Council. There will be four additional questions, question two, three, four, and five, and that is on metal, the recreational marijuana, in regards to having retail businesses in town. So the town will get to decide on that, that is a binding question. So those, so I just wanted to clarify that, because I did get several phone calls this weekend, and I did get an email, two emails, and I just wanted to make sure that the public knows that that is not sponsored by us, question one. The "Southbridge First" is the Casella campaign. So we just, I want to make sure, and I will reiterate it again, that we are not sponsoring that question, okay? Now moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, Town Manager's Announcements, Mr. Sanangelo.
Mr. Chairman, the council will be happy to know that I have no announcements tonight, so it will be quick and easy.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, Swearing In and Presentations, Update on Beautify Southbridge Held on April 22nd, and Andrew Pelletier.
Buenos noches. I've got a Spanish for dummies tape, and I started listening to it. I've been here three and a half years now. My constituents, my peers often ask me, you know, "Are you still having fun, are you enjoying Southbridge, and why Southbridge?" And it keeps going back to, the people of this town, "Step up." Every time we do something, the people step up. There's, there's an amazing pride in this town that I never found in any of the other towns I worked for. Having said that, there's also a serious lack of bragging on the parts of the people, so I'm going to take about three minutes, and I'm going to brag on the parts of the people for a great event that we held on April 22nd. Since I came here, we've had a Beautify Southbridge Day. It's a day when we can get the citizens to come in and help us clean the town up. My first year here, I think it was raining out, but we got 30 to 40 people to show up. Last year, we had close to 60. This year, we had 77 people who registered and helped us clean the Town of Southbridge. It's a growing event, we're very proud of what's going on. Some of the partners that came into this, Trade Winds, I'm going to thank Sam, she brought a group of her clientele from Trade Winds, they did Central Street Parking, Holy Trinity Church, Tasman brought in a group, our Trails Committee and our Conservation Committee worked on, I don't, I don't know if you're familiar with the rail trail behind Foster Street, but that was a, one of the nastiest areas in the Town of Southbridge, and they stepped in and cleaned that one up. Also, Southbridge Student Council came in, there were another group that helped us, helped us out. Those were the big groups, individually, there were a ton of people who just showed up and said, "Can I help?" 77 people, we cleaned somewhere between 11 and 13 miles of the Town of Southbridge, including or in addition to Central Street Parking, Henry Street Field, and Edward Street Parking. 11 to 13 miles is approximately 1/8 of the total miles in the Town of Southbridge, so very, very happy to announce that. We pulled out 188 bags of trash this year, that came out to about 100, I mean, a ton and a half. Best estimate, we got about 10 to 12 yards of bulk items, furniture, scrap metals, other items like that. Estimate about two to three tons of bulk items. So we, we pulled a total between trash and bulk of three to four tons of trash, of debris that was littering our roads. Additionally, we pulled out 139 tires. Previous years, we had kind of like tried to avoid the rutlands and the tires, because we didn't really have a take-up for those. I really want to thank Dave, Dave Petrillo from Plaza Auto. He stepped up, I actually went to him and I said, "Can you be a collection point for tires?" And he said he would be glad to do it. I said, "Just at the end of this, give me a bill, and, and the Town of Southbridge will pay for disposal of these tires. I have a nuisance account to cover," things like that. Dave hasn't gotten back to me yet. I've made a couple attempts to contact him, and he hasn't gotten back to me yet, and he's kind of indicated that he's going to eat the money to dispose of them tires. So again, great partner, we never had a partner like this, who stepped up and said he would take this for us. On a slightly sadder note, although proud at the same time, Mr. Sanangelo's Drug Abuse Committee, unfortunately, we found 20 syringes, and we picked up 20 syringes. It's very sad that we found 20 syringes on the streets of Southbridge, let me turn that around, we found 20 syringes and we moved them, removed them from the streets of Southbridge. So sad situation, but at the same time, very proud of what we accomplished there. We had some financial help from the Last Green Valley, they gave us a $500 grant to assist in this cleanup, and actually, I'm going to hesitate, they didn't give us a $5,000 grant. We, we at the Board of Health are trying to stop programs, get them off, out of their fledgling state, and get them up and running, and then hand them off to community partners, and I cannot be prouder of Center of Hope. Center of Hope has taken this on, they have done all of the arrangements, we are basically co-sponsors now for them, they were originally a co-sponsor for us. Having private partners help us out is a great benefit, because Center of Hope can solicit donations, which we cannot, because that's a, we license a lot of the places that help us out. So the Center of Hope can go out and solicit donations and other things that we can't accomplish, they can accept grants that we would have to go through the acceptance process to do, they're the ones that got the grant from the Last Green Valley. So I want to again put a special thanks out there to Plaza Auto, the Center of Hope, and the Last Green Valley, as well as all of the people who helped us pull this thing off. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the council? Just, I would like to say thank you to you and your department, and all those sponsors for the job well done. It's not, it's not something that's taken for granted, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Steves.
I don't know, I don't know if they had anything to do, were you aware that there was also a team that was going out, a large number of people were cleaning up on Eastford Road on Saturday, too?
I missed that, I'm sorry.
Just past Saturday. A whole large number of people were cleaning on Eastford Road on Saturday, too. I don't know if they had anything to do with you guys, or...
We included that, and we, we helped them get rid of that. That was, that was part of the...
This past Saturday?
There's a different group that actually goes out there every year, and does Eastford Road, so...
Because I saw them, and wanted to thank them, too, so...
We did, they do a great job for us. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager.
Andy, just one question for you, I'm curious, do you know how many bags of trash were removed? I know there was a lot.
188 bags of trash?
188 bags of trash.
And we estimate, some of them were heavy, some of them were light, so we estimate about 15 pounds per bag.
About 15 pounds, but a lot of trash was taken out, throughout, throughout town.
A lot, a ton and a half is our estimate, and additionally, I'm sorry, I forgot them, but Casella came through afterwards, and they picked up all the bags where we left them. So I will also thank Casella curbside for helping us with that.
Perfect, thank you. And I commented to the last meeting, Andy, and I'll comment again, you know, as we were picking up trash, there were three things that were very noticeable. One is those alcohol nip bottles that were everywhere, two was lottery tickets that people just throw all over the place, and three is cigarette butts. If we could cut out the vices people have, it would keep Southbridge a lot cleaner, but that, that was a big bulk of a lot of the trash that we found, and it was sad.
It is, the number one trash, the number one trash item is the nip bottles, and as you said, number two is lottery. If you don't want to give up your vices, that's fine, but please keep them in the car, it would help us a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Citizen Forum. We're going to ask you to come to the podium, state your name, address, you'll have five minutes, keep it respectful.
Good evening, Council, Town of Southbridge, Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Avenue. Ironically, I, I did help with the Beautify Southbridge, I helped with the Trail Committee, picking up a lot of the, it wasn't just littered down on the rail trail, it's illegal dumping, which added to the pile and the number of tires. But ironically, on my way here tonight, I walked by a piece of trash, and I picked it up. It was one of these. I don't think, now this was not one of the six I received at my residence, this was one further down the street. I don't believe that hanging this on a trash can and not expecting it to blow away is an appropriate thing to be doing in our town. You might recall, a few years ago, I had a problem with newspapers that were being tossed here, there, and everywhere. I called it mandatory littering. They would stack up in the gutters, they would end up in bushes, and sooner or later, the plastic bag would rip, or a bird would be making nest material out of it. Nobody asked permission to throw however many thousands of circulars around the town. I mean, if I go out this trash period, and I decide to lay a piece of paper on every trash can that I walk by, I know sooner or later, Andy's going to say, "You're littering." It's just another example of how we have issues in town, on both sides of the same story. I, I'd like to apologize for my appearance, but it is springtime, it's still daylight out, I actually would rather be out doing something other than speaking to the council. Once again, on the subject of trash, and litter, and garbage, and landfill, I, I must admit, I, I'm getting a little tired of it. I've been doing it 20 years, since 1996. That's all I have to say for tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you. Any other citizens that would like to address the council?
So when I lived in New Mexico, before I moved to Southbridge, one of our neighbors came by, and we had just moved in, and they gave us a little made basket, and it was so nice. And I just wanted to let people know that this is May Day, this is May 1st, it's a holiday for many people worldwide. For many years, May 1st was celebrated as the first day of summer, as there were Beltane and Maypole celebrations in common lands and squares. In the late 19th century, May Day took on significance for workers, as the day marked the anniversary of the Haymarket Strike in Chicago. So I encourage everybody to combine the two holidays, and celebrate the earth and workers. In recent time, human workers have lost a lot of the rights they had worked hard for, benefits, a decent workday, and the right to unionize. Appreciate the workers you come in contact with, thank them for their work. They are getting the acknowledgement and fairness they deserve. As unions are weakened, work shifts are getting longer, paychecks are getting... work shifts are getting longer, paychecks are getting smaller, and benefits are diminishing. Care for our environment is diminishing as well, as pollution is getting worse. The cause for both of these is lack of, cause of both, lack of respect for the earth and for the workers, is primarily due to the pursuit of money to the detriment of all else. Let's respect the earth and all its inhabitants, after all, we cannot eat money. We need to protect the resources we have to grow and raise food to live and breathe. Protect our, protect resources and that of our neighbors and vote no on ballot question one on June thirteenth, and happy May Day.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Please state the name.
Good evening, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to come up here and speak for a minute, I'll be very brief.
Sir, can you just state your name?
My name is Tommy Purwood, I live at one-fifty Clements Hill.
Thank you.
I got mine, it was in the mail today. I promise, Kevin, I won't throw it in the street, I'll put it where it belongs. So, I really just wanted to comment and ask a question about item number twelve on the agenda.
Unfortunately, you cannot, we, you can ask that question during that agenda item. We'll have a, a portion of that where you can discuss.
Oh, alright, well, that was what my question was.
Okay.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda?
I, I think four people are gonna want to speak when that agenda item comes up, so please don't rush it to, you know, moving your question before some of the citizens get to speak after you all get your chance. My name's John Poloski of Three Genison Street, and for the first time in seven years, because I haven't had charter until just recently, I got to see a town council meeting on the television. And it was, it was interesting. And I'm glad that I didn't, I'm glad I wasn't here, because I would've spoken, and it was best that I didn't, because you all resolved it on your own. The marijuana question, whether or not that's going to help with serious drug abuse in the town, we could debate for every meeting for years, because very good doctors do that. You can never really figure that out for sure. But what you did do, I think you should pat yourselves on the back for this, when you realized that you were gonna put a question on, instead of oversimplifying it with some sort of like just say no, all bundled all together, you went and broke it into four parts. And that was very honorable, because it would've been confusing otherwise. One of those questions, the one regarding marijuana testing, is something that a person that is completely against all kinds of drugs, probably alcohol and cigarettes, would want to be able to have marijuana testing facility. But, so you separated them. Then you separated it like from the libertarians, from, let's say, a very liberal person, by allowing, or at least allowing the question on whether or not commercial entities can take place, and then you had the, the retail question for more, let's say, the liberal. So, you broke it into four pieces, and that was a great thing. And the reason I'm rehashing some you all remember very well, is that we have a question one, which relates to the expansion of the landfill, but it relates to more than that. And many people have been surprised to hear, and some people were upset with me for this until I explained why, although I would never vote yes, I'd also be reluctant to vote no. And the reason I'd be reluctant to vote no, is there's a lot of ambiguity on one side, it's four questions in one. One could argue, because it opens up another door that's not even mentioned, it's five questions in one. And what concerns me the most is the, let's just call it the ambiguous go-away end of the, let's say, everyone in town says no, and I know it's not binding, unlike the question last night, last week, but if we say no, there's nothing in there about who pays for the reach eight removal? Is this something they could use in a court saying, you know, in a state that aren't as home rule so much, especially the courts? Can they go to a court later and say, oh, they didn't want us there, we don't have to pay for the free trash pickup in the middle of the next decade? We don't have to, I don't know. It's amazing, well, some people shaking their heads, but it's amazing what attorneys will come up with in the heat of battle in the courtroom. And they're allowed to say, they come up with some, as you know, as we all may remember the OJ trial a number of years ago, it's amazing what you can get away with. Come up with good rhyme, and you could possibly get away with murder. So, what I'm gonna ask you to do, it might be harder for a rich man to get through a, I have a needle or camel to get through, and I have a needle. I know you're very busy with the budget, but you still have time, approximately a week, to break, question one is question one. The, some committee, a Southbridge first or some, somebody wants the landfill to expand, and in the words of our president, they're pretty smart cookies whoever put that together, because they've got a no-lose situation there. Because even if the people of town say no, they'll be able to use the vote no in the courts. And we know they're going to the courts. And this information, it can't get out there, because there's things that can't be discussed by the council of the town, because of the pending liability-related lawsuits. So, the people don't really know, and I only have a minute, so I wanna get, cut to the chase. I'm asking you to consider maybe one of your, a quick council meeting, to put four questions on the ballot, one has to stay, maybe even some of them binding. For example, the airport, I don't know, I've asked people in town government, I've done two good answers, I haven't asked the town manager, I haven't asked the people that really ought to know, but there's a sense, people don't know, are they talking about possibly expanding on the airport in its entirety like people discussed years ago? Are they talking about just a few acres? That's the ambiguity that has me concerned. May I have two minutes?
Do I have a count, do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor for two minutes? Two minutes granted.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The expansion, that's a given, that's already covered in number one. But then there's the negotiation, you're being asked on whether you can negotiate. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a, I'm a democratic person with a small d, but you don't need permission. And I'm not one of the people that wanted to have town meeting, but you guys don't need permission to negotiate with them? I think you should've done it a year ago. And there's no reason to hold up the negotiation, that leave town, you know, you don't need our permission, and it's one of the questions on the ballot, whether the town should negotiate, specifically about the tonnage. We were promised most favored nation state status, all we had to check with were the people up in Fitchburg, there's different definitions, and I think we should, I think we're missing on hundreds of thousands, if not over a million dollars, because of that twenty-seven thousand dollar study that got all messed up and didn't get finished. And there's a question that doesn't, that isn't on the ballot, but it's one of my biggest fears, it's really what got me involved in this, thank you, the reach eight that might be asked, they may even ask for another bond for it in the future, but bringing reach eight down to our sewer plant, our water treatment plant, would be a bad thing. And after they leave, or even if they stay, I'd like the people of this town to be able to put in their two cents on that. And also, what's come up, up in Exbridge, we were told at one time it can't be done, Exbridge has proven it can be done, I believe we need to vote on whether contaminated soil should be allowed to go up in that landfill in the future, even if it's for the next six months. Thank you for extending my time, thank you for your service, you're talented, I know you've been very busy with the budget, but if you could consider putting these additional questions, some possibly binding, I assure you, I guarantee, there's very few things we can guarantee, but I can guarantee you will have a better sense of what the people in this town want by asking such questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poloski. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Final time, are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Vote to confirm the police chief's recommendation to promote Detective Robert M. Salisbury to the rank of provisional sergeant effective May fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. This time, before we take a motion, I'll turn it over to our police chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Town Manager, members of the council, thanks for having us here tonight. Just quickly, if I could talk a little bit about Detective Salisbury. As I said in the PPP meeting last week, he's been with our department for approximately eleven years. Prior to his service as a full-time officer, he was an auxiliary with us for three years also. During that time, he was promoted to the rank of detective, where he's been since two thousand and ten, and for the last seven years or so, he's been responsible for the investigation of every major crime in the community, narcotics, sexual assaults, anything that's a, a big crime in the community, he's a part of a team that investigates that. He's, during his time with us, he's earned an associate's degree in criminal justice. He's been involved in the cops and kids program for about ten years or so. The last year or two, since Deputy Chief Dinghy has risen through the ranks, he's kind of taken on more of the day-to-day operations of that program. I think he's a great asset for the department. It's important to note that it's a budgeted position. We had a sergeant who chose to voluntarily resign, he did not want to be a sergeant anymore, didn't want to be a supervisor for personal reasons, which I will not get into. So, Detective Salisbury, they're essentially swapping positions. Detective Salisbury will move up to sergeant, and the sergeant will go back to a patrol officer position. It's the next step in his career, and I highly recommend Detective Salisbury.
This time, I'll entertain a motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Ten. Vote to confirm the police chief's recommendation to appoint Eric A. Raymond of Munson, Mass. as a permanent full-time police officer for the town of Southbridge, effective upon successful completion of all physical, medical testing as required by the Human Resource Division Civil Service. We'll turn it over to the police chief.
If I could for you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Raymond's been a full-time police officer for the town of Palmer for the last five years. Prior to his hiring with Palmer, he served three years as an armed campus police officer for Weston New England College. Prior to that, he was a dispatcher for a police department for five years. He's been in the business for a while, he understands the, the industry. Throughout his training and experiences, he's earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He's a budgeted position, we had a retirement, a disability retirement a few months ago, Mr. Raymond essentially would fill that position. It's important to note with this particular gentleman, he is academy-trained, I know I had mentioned this at the PPP, it'd be zero dollars to train him. You guys have heard me get up here and talk for hours about the cost of training recruits. Mr. Raymond can essentially come into our department, do a brief field training officer until he becomes familiar with the policies and procedures of our department, and then he can essentially be put on the streets and help protect the citizens of the community. It's a great hire, he's a, he'd be a great asset to the department, I highly recommend him.
Thank you. Any questions? Discussion? None, seeing, roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, man, council.
At this time, the council will take a five-minute recess. Good evening, and we are back. So, we will pick up where we left off. Agenda Item Number Eleven, vote to accept a grant in the amount of five million dollars from Mass DEP to partially finance the design, engineering, and construction costs of a water line to address contamination in wells and conditions that otherwise might pose an unacceptable risk at residences and other properties on H-Foot Road, Eleanor Lane, and Berry Corner Road in the town of Charlton, and to provide a secure source of fit and pure water for the residents.
So much.
Any discussion before, I'll go, let's, I'm gonna let the town manager open up and maybe he might answer any of those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to give a brief explanation of this. And first, as I start off, I want to thank Governor Baker and Commissioner Sueberg for working with the town of Southbridge and the town of Charlton to make this happen. This is a direct five-million-dollar appropriation to the town of Southbridge that will be kept in a separate individual account for the purpose of, of, of building a water line from Southbridge up to Charlton to the residents that are affected by the contamination in their wells. Now, I want to be clear, it's up to five million, because if the project comes in a lower amount, we reimburse the DEP for any money that's there. I also want to thank our legislators for being in support of Senator Fatman and Representative Durant being supportive of this. What I think was really important of this issue is that the DEP realized that the first priority is to make sure that those residents that have contaminated wells get safe drinking water. And I think they understood that that's a priority. And in fact, the way the issue is going, it could end up in litigation, and this issue might be in court for many, many years, and in that time, those residents would've been stuck with, with bottled water. So, I think the DEP was smart to settle this, they've been a great partner with us. Commissioner Sueberg has been on the phone with me for months and months and months in the negotiations. So, it's not often you have a commissioner of the state of Massachusetts actually involved in negotiations. Goes to show the importance that he put on this project. So, again, we've been working with Karen on this issue, that five million dollars will go into a dedicated account. Along, as you know, we'll be talking in a few minutes about another five million dollars that is gonna be paid back by the Casella Organization and SRDP. I know that, but, but I just want to explain that as we pay bills, because the town of Southbridge is gonna build this water line, fifty percent will come from the DEP funds and fifty percent will come from the other account, so that you don't want to have the DEP money spent first and then, and then the Casella money, you want to spend it equally from both accounts. So, we get a bill in, we'll pay fifty percent from one account, fifty percent of our other account, and we are required to keep very thorough records, and I believe that Karen will be reporting to the state DEP, and I believe it's a quarterly basis. So, I just kind of want to understand how this works in terms of the funding mechanism. It's a simple grant, and unusual, sometimes you get reimbursement grants, in this case, it's literally five million dollars right into an account. That's all I had to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up to discussion. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, just a quick question, I thought we voted on this last week when we came out of executive session.
Yes, but we have to officially accept the grant, because this is vote to accept the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Do we have citizens that would like to ask in regards to this agenda item? Strictly this agenda item, please. No, eleven. We're on eleven. Okay. Seeing none, do we have any citizens that would like to address the council on Agenda Item Number Eleven? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Twelve. It's a lengthy agenda item. The town of Southbridge, Massachusetts parentheses Charlton Water Line Project ordered that ten million dollars is hereby appropriated to the cost of the designing and constructing, constructing, excuse me, water mains in the town of Charlton, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight, parentheses fourteen, of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereof. and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. No amount shall be borrowed or expended pursuant to this vote unless and until the town shall have entered into a grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, providing for the pavement of a grant of at least one-half of the total cost of this project, and further that the town, the total, excuse me, and that the total amount authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this vote shall be reduced to the extent of all amounts received by the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on account of this project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of the costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by any like amount. The town manager is authorized to amend the inter-municipal agreement between the town of Southbridge and the town of Charlton dated April twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, pursuant to which the town furnishes water to the town of Charlton so as to provide such additional authority as the town shall require to carry out the purpose of this order. Requires a two-third roll call vote.
So much. Second.
Okay. Discussion. Mr. Town Manager, and then we'll open it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, you know, there's a flag in this. As soon as you read it, the ten million dollar number kind of throws you, you go, what's that all about, right? So before I get on to the explanation of this, this is, you see, this is a drafty motion, and the reason it's a drafty motion is written by a lawyer. It's written by our bond counsel to make sure that it's a legal drafting, and it is required by law as to how you draft this kind of a motion. The ten million dollars essentially is the total cost of the project, but you have to subtract out the five million dollar of state grant money. That's why they require it that way. But I want Mindy, our town treasurer collector, to just briefly explain why bond counsel wanted that language that way. Because it, as soon as I saw it, I thought it was a typo myself. So let me, let Mindy kind of explain that issue.
Whenever we do a project where there are grant funds involved, we appropriate the total amount of the project. And you can see on the second page of the agenda, the fifth line down, it says that the total amount authorized to be borrowed will be reduced by any funds received by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So we will only borrow up to five million dollars once we've received that money. And it's written so that if something happened and that grant doesn't come through, this vote is null and void. We can't borrow ten million dollars.
Thank you.
So back to Mr. Chairman to kind of explain it now. The last meeting, we voted for what was called the consent order, and we voted to approve that, and it talks about this, and it's part of the agreement that we voted on at the last meeting. This is actually the bonding structure to go out and borrow the money. This was something that frankly was crucially important to Department of Environmental Protection asked us to borrow it. And again, Mindy said it very clearly, it's up to five million dollars of bonding. Now, what will happen is, as the project is built, as the road, as the road, as the water line is being built, we will borrow short-term notes, and then you won't do the bonding until the end of the project, once we know what the amount is. Because it might be four million dollars, or four and a half, we don't know what it is. Five million dollars is the maximum amount that's been agreed to by Casella Organization, and five million maximum by the governor's office and the DEP. That doesn't mean we have to borrow that much. If the project comes in a lower price, then, you know, they're only going to borrow what they need. But that gives us the authorization right up to the five million. Now, the questions I expected, a number of maybe audience members are going to ask, I kind of want to answer to some degree so that people understand this. The five million dollars DEP has asked us to borrow on behalf of Casella for their share of the ten million dollar water line, up to five million dollars. It was something that the commissioner made clear that was kind of part of the deal. And the reason that is, is because we're trying to keep the cost of this project as low as possible, and towns have the advantage to be able to borrow at a much lower price than the private sector. And because this is a water line, it has benefit to the town of Southbridge. This was sort of our part of the deal, in the agreement to get the water up there and to do this water line. Now, people are wondering why we would do that. Well, I've talked to numerous occasions to this board that Sanborn Head did a study and did all kinds of environmental testing, and from all of that testing, they believe that the contamination is not coming from the landfill. Our consultant, Ty and Bond, has reviewed all the data, and they believe that it's not coming from the landfill. As you've heard DEP say at a couple of public meetings, they're not a hundred percent convinced. They don't believe all the information we gave them absolutely says it's not coming from the landfill. And in their mind, they believe it still is. They can't prove that it is anywhere, any more than we can prove a hundred percent that it's not. So even though all the environmental testing is saying we don't believe it's coming from the landfill, the odds are it's not coming from the landfill, there's no hundred percent guarantee for anything on this. Water goes down into rocks, and it goes a billion different directions, and there's no way to absolutely prove that. The ACO that we did at the last meeting, and the twenty-one E agreement, and the IMA, all goes to reducing the liability and to resolving this problem of getting clean water to Charlton residents. The if, if in the future somehow it was proven that the contamination was coming from the landfill, the town could potentially be responsible for building its own water line. Forget about DEP money. The town could have that liability itself if it ever is proven. We don't think that would be the case, but there's this risk that it could be. This agreement reduces that risk dramatically, because now DEP and Casella pay for the water line at no cost to Southbridge taxpayers. Huge win. Also, as part of the agreement, we made the twenty-one agreement. Counselors are aware, and citizens should be aware, that the Casella Organization or SRDP has spent a couple of million dollars in doing all kinds of testing up there and providing bottled water, and doing a whole bunch of environmental studies that were required by DEP. The Casella Organization, SRDP, has said that we believe that the town of Southbridge is responsible for some or all of all of that two million dollars in testing, okay? Part of the agreement that we put forward is that Casella agrees that they are not going to come after the town for that two million dollars. So that's another two million dollars of potential, and I stress, potential liability, because we don't know if they would win, or we would win that case, but it gets rid of a long court case, a lot of legal appeals, and the potential of losing two million dollars, okay? So there's a huge interest in Southbridge in building this water line, not because we think we're guilty or we know we're guilty, but because there's this liability out there that we need to protect the Southbridge taxpayers from. So that's what this is all about. That's why we are willing to do this agreement, and why we're willing to borrow the money. Citizen had asked me, and I wanted this to be clear, what guarantees us that Casella's going to pay back that money? Well, first of all, the town has already done this. When they built Commercial Drive, they did a project with just SRDP doing a bond for the Commercial Drive road, and they've been paying us back fine, it's not really been an issue, right? But that was a little uncomfortable with that. So I wanted added guarantees to this agreement to make sure that we are better protected. So first, they already have a six million dollar bond for the landfill. Now, this issue is going to be covered under that six million dollar bond. It's going to be added to the existing bond. So that's one added protection for this money. Two is that instead of SRDP being the subsidiary responsible, also I make the Casella's organization, which is a much bigger business, a much more wealthy business, is also required to be a guarantee of this money as well, which they weren't on the other note, okay? Thirdly, this is all in legal contract form, that they all owe us the money. And fourthly, the next main protection is what's being described to me as a pop-up bond. If Casella has in their contracts with their own personal creditors, in other words, they have a big credit line with all their different banks and stuff, okay? With that credit line, when their balance sheet gets to a certain level, the creditors automatically get notified that their credit, that their company's more risky, okay, and their financial status is not as clear. We also put a requirement in before it reaches that threshold with its creditors, because that really tells the creditors, maybe you shouldn't borrow any more money to them, their balance sheet is, maybe we shouldn't borrow any money. Before it reaches that level, we put in another protection that says, before it reaches that level, if you go down to a certain point, and we had financial advisors and lawyers look at this, that we are going to require you to put in a bond for whatever the balances of the note, the five million dollars, to give us even more protection. So our protection for this money is very strong and very, very good. Now, it's not, I want to be clear, it's not a hundred percent, but it's very, very strong that we will get our money back. And the reason I put this protection in is that looking at their balance sheet, looking at their financial numbers, our financial advisors say they're in great shape right now. I don't know what they're going to look like ten years or twelve years from now. So I wanted that added protection to make sure that in the future, if Casella does run into any financial problems, then in fact, a bond would have to be issued to protect that money. So that's how we know that the taxpayers in Southbridge are going to be protected, and that money's going to get paid back, okay? So I just kind of wanted to spell that out so the taxpayers understand, yes, there's risk, but the risk is much, much smaller because myself, because the negotiating team, because the bond counsel, because the lawyers, and because financial advisors all put in these protections to protect the town as much as possible in this kind of an agreement. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to talk.
Thank you. I have Counselor Steves, and then Counselor Manna.
Yeah, thank you. I did have one question, and obviously, we've talked a lot about all of that stuff, but how come that stuff is not specifically mentioned in the motion? How come those particular issues, the ones that you just brought out about the guarantees are not mentioned in the motion?
Because those... I can answer that. It's, the motion is, it's written by legal counsel.
Yeah, I get that, but why weren't they included?
They did not want to include that language, because it's in the contract. So the contract is a separate legal binding document that is attached. This is our voting document. So the public has access to that contract. It's a public record, and we've already looked at it.
Right.
Unfortunately, we're not going to put twenty-something pages in a motion. You know what I'm saying? So...
Is there any way it could be amended to include reference to that contract?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. It's because the motion is not the protections. The motion is to borrow the ten million dollars.
Yeah, I got that.
So this is just the legal language that was produced by legal counsel.
Yeah.
Because I asked several questions, and when I got the agenda, and I wanted to make sure, and it's, we cannot change it. It's legal language. When, once we approve or disapprove tonight, then, you know, it gets attached to the, with the whole consent order. Okay, contract. I have Counselor Manna, and then, no, okay. Counselor Clements.
I just want to point out again, that is what we came out of executive session and voted on, the contract which had all those assurances in it. That is the binding document for what we agreed to, strictly the vote situation that we need to borrow the money. That's all our vote is tonight is on authorization. The most important thing we did was that vote last week, voting on the actual contract. Now we have to vote on getting the money. That's all tonight's vote is. We've already made the agreement with them. Now we have to follow through, or they could potentially, like any other contracts we've tried to breach in the past, you know? So we won't be breaching any contracts.
I get that. I was just wondering why that wasn't referred to in this motion.
It's just not part of it, yeah.
It's the bond counsel.
Yep.
Any further discussion on this? We'll turn it over to the, we'll have citizens come. Please state your name, address. You'll have three minutes.
One fifty Clements Hill.
No, please keep it respectful.
Always.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to come up and ask a couple of questions. One was about guaranteeing that this wasn't going to get stuck on taxpayers. We bought our house here three years ago. Every year, my property taxes have risen. These guys are saying we're going to get higher taxes without them. They're still here. They're going up every year. So the town of Southbridge, what's our tax base? What's the revenue? Fifty, sixty million?
I can't hear.
Our tax base, fifty, sixty million? Town of Southbridge, our budget?
Our budget, yeah, it's about...
Our budget is fifty...
But that's, but that's not our taxes. That's our town budget, about fifty-three million.
Okay, so that's our town budget. And are we in the red or the black on that budget?
It's a balanced budget.
It's even, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're between fifty and sixty million? What was the number? I'm sorry. A little over fifty million. Casella Waste System, listed on the NASDAQ as CWST, closed thirty-three cents higher today for fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents a share. Their revenue, five hundred and sixty-five million dollars, and we're guaranteeing a bond for them. As a taxpayer in Southbridge, I have a problem with that. Just wanted to come up here and see if I could have that addressed by, you know, having some kind of insurance, assurances that we're not going to get hit with this bill down the road. And I think as a taxpayer in Southbridge, and I think everybody in Southbridge who owns a house here, understands the pain that we're going through, and the climate that we're in right now with Casella and the contamination in Charlton, and water going every which way when it hits the rocks. I live a mile and a half away from that landfill. We've had a lot of rain. In fact, myself and my neighbors had our wells tested for VOCs in the town. We went to the Board of Health, petitioned them, and they paid for the VOC testing if we agreed to pay for the water testing. That was a year ago. So I'm due for the next health, Board of Health meeting to go and ask for that again. But I just, I just feel like it's the wrong time to be putting more potential burdens on taxpayers than we really need to. And I welcome any comments.
Okay. We want to address one of your questions, and it's in regards to the burden on taxes and on residents. Again, this is not going to be affecting our citizens at all. This money does not come from the town of Southbridge. It's being paid for by two different organizations, and every single dollar that's spent is being paid by those two organizations. The reason we are borrowing the money, number one, is because the commissioner of DEP has requested it as part of the negotiations. Number two is because we are able to produce a lower rate for both parties at the end of the day. It's not just one-party deal. This is both, we are providing this for both parties. So this, I guarantee you, this wasn't an easy decision for none of us. There was many different questions, many things discussed, but this is not going to affect the town of Southbridge taxpayers.
I definitely appreciate what you're saying, and I...
Counselor Clements wants to address all that.
Just a point. We're reducing our liability of thirteen, almost thirteen million dollars to the taxpayers by taking this deal. Right now, the way it stands, if we didn't have this deal, the potential in the next few years for us to be completely liable to this water line is to owe almost thirteen million dollars. By taking this deal and doing this bond, we relinquish the taxpayers of almost thirteen million dollars in liability. So I think this council, in the many hours and the work that the manager and everyone else, and the governors done, and the commissioners done, has helped this community to relinquish that particular liability. If that's not enough, I'm just not sure anymore, because everybody comes and asks us to get water to Charlton, and we've agreed to do that. Our part is to relinquish the liability to the taxpayers, and I believe that this council did that.
So if we're saving thirteen million dollars, is that going to show up in our tax bill somehow?
Well, that's a separate question, because that, what you see on an annual basis in regards to your annual increase in tax bill, is it's not anything to do with really Casella, right, at this point? What it does, you know, it's our annual town budget. One of the reasons you have seen, and there is a possibility of another tax increase this year, is because this council has chosen with this town manager to take, to get off that Casella money. So we are getting our taxes raised, but at the same time, we're not depending on what they're giving us. So we can be a self-standing, self-sufficient government without the need of Casella funds. That's my goal.
So, Mr. Pro, just to be clear, right? We're talking about future potential liability. In other words, we're not, it's not even in your budget. If we didn't do this, and we had lost lawsuits, your taxes could go way up to pay for those lawsuits. So what this is doing is protecting taxpayers from any future costs that could hit them as a result of any contamination.
With Charlton?
With, with anything. In other words, if citizens sued us, and they said, let's assume, this is a big assume, assume, but I want to be clear, that somehow it was proven that it came from our landfill, then residents would have a right to sue us because there's contamination coming. We might have to build a water line ourselves. So that saves us from potential expenses in the future.
Does this in any way, shape or form admit some sort of culpability for the VOCs that are involved?
No, as a matter of fact, the specific agreement makes it clear that ourselves, the town of Southbridge, Casella, do not in any way agree that the contamination is coming from the landfill. That's stated explicitly in the legal agreement.
All right. I trust you guys know what you're doing. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Counselor Claire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really quick, it was mentioned by the manager that, you know, Casella spent a lot of money on testing and everything that they, that in turn wanted the town to pay back to the tune of between $2 and $3 million. So without this agreement, the taxpayers of Southbridge would have been on the hook for that $2 or $3 million if it went through court and they were successful in that. So what this does, it not only solves a problem and gets the residents of Charlton their water, the people, the taxpayers of Southbridge don't have to pay for this because it's paid by the two and it also eliminates all of that liability that you possibly could have, could have paid otherwise. I think everybody can agree, it's not a solid thing that nothing can ever happen in the future and that, you know, there might not be something down the line, but it's about as solid as it can get. And there were a lot of people that worked really hard to make it that way, to try and protect the residents of Southbridge.
Counselor Steves?
I can certainly understand your concern because I am personally also rather distrustful of that organization. And I can tend to be kind of distrustful of big corporations in general. But I think that a lot of the stuff that's been going on with this particular deal is stuff that really, that we need, that needs to be done. And it's one of those things where, you know, something 20 years from now or 10 years from now that might come down the pike is one of those things where I certainly hope it doesn't happen. And that something that, you know, theoretically, something could happen. But we hope that the stuff that is going on tonight, the last meeting tonight and this project will help prevent as much of what's going on from becoming a bigger issue than, as far as we can get it to that point. You know, I mean, I would love to wave a magic wand and have that landfill just vanish, but it's not going to happen. And I think we all know that unfortunately. So I'm, I want to see this work. I think the people obviously deserve to have good water up there. And, you know, and we need to keep tabs on, like, for example, people in your neighborhood and some of the other areas that are nearby there too, because as everybody knows, nobody knows exactly where this water is going. And this is an issue we're going to have to be watching for a long, long time, whether they're there or not.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope. Just wanted to make sure nobody had anything else. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other citizens that would like to address the council on this agenda item? You state your name, address.
Dan Butler, 35 Brookside Road, Southbridge. I've got a lot to say, but I'll just make it brief because we don't want to be here all night. But can I just ask Counselor Clements, just clarify the, you said, future $13 million liabilities? Where that figure comes from or is it...
Well, as we, first off, the water line is costing up to $10 million. All estimates come in just over $9 million for this, for what's being done. The up to, the extra three, as Counselor O'Clair also pointed out, it has to do with the 21E in which Casella said to that, to us, if there's contamination, it's coming from the online portion and therefore the town is liable for that. And they have put out over $2 million for the testing, the water and everything else. So they sent us a demand letter saying that we were a responsible party to that. At this point, prior to the agreement being voted on last week, we were liable for that money and they could easily take us to court and then say, hey, you know, you're liable, come up with the money and pay for this because we believe it's coming from the online landfill. And because technically, between all the engineers that have said it's not and DEP still saying, well, you can't, you're guilty until proven innocent, we, I would say we were at a pretty good point where we would have had to come up with part, if not all, of that money. So when I say 13, up to $13 million at this point, which given another few months, six, another year in litigation or two years or three in litigation, that number probably could have been $4 or $5 million between fees and everything else. So technically, the $10 million for the water line that's being established and the additional 21E. Last week, this council chose to take this agreement, which then obliterated that 21E liability right now. So that disappeared completely and the 10, up to $10 million to pay for the water line is no longer in our court either. It's now the state has given us $5 million and the company will give us $5 million and that will, we will oversee that project, which is what was also mandated, was that the town of Southbridge. Heather, our DP, Heather Blakely, our DPW director, will help to oversee that project at the beginning to get it all going and get out the bids and get the right contractors. And, you know, Charlton had their own Exxon situation going through, so Exxon was already working on the water lines in certain parts of that component. We are making the extension off to get it to those homes and making sure those people have clean drinking water. So is that, I mean, is that...
Yeah, I just...
Kind of go?
A lot of wording, a lot of numbers thrown around, I'm just asking.
My taxes will go too, you know? I'd rather, we already have enough as the chairman pointed out. There's a lot of monies that we will be, revenues that are reducing. There's no doubt. We're trying to work off of that. We've been getting revenue.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Any other citizen that would like to address? Please state your name, address.
Kevin Buxton, 28 Clements Avenue. It's docked now, so I figured I'd stick around for this subject. It's one of the longest agenda items I've seen and I was a bit surprised at. People in the know, know the $5 million that the town is taking out the bond is being paid by our good partner, Casella. Once again, it's a situation, I appreciate that this is going to resolve the residents of H-Foot Road and that area of Charlton with their water situation. But once again, I draw to the partnership. The town of Southbridge and Casella have a partnership and I see it in a lot of ways almost like a marriage. Because as long as the two of you keep holding hands, you can walk into court and neither partner can testify against the other because we're not asking the questions that need to be asked. We're not, our partner's protecting us and we're protecting our partner. This is another situation, we just kicked a can down the road. Yes, we're getting out of this can of worms and Casella's pulling back the bed sheets and saying, come on, Southbridge, just a little while longer, be our partner and everything will work out just fine. Well, it's not working out just fine. And this handles one can of worms, but Sturbridge is another can of worms and where does the contamination go after that? I asked my council, Tyon Bond does a quarterly report. Tyon Bond is our consulting firm. Tyon Bond's quarterly report for 2016 is a 265-page report. Do not try to work through all 265. They do a four-page summary. And the four-page summary is based on not H-Foot Road, not Sturbridge, it's based on inspection wells on our property. Remember, it's our property. It's our property. It will forever be our property unless, if you want to give up total liability, I gave the town manager a real suggestion, sell the whole damn thing to them. Be over and done with it. And then have them come to us, not as a partner holding hands, but as somebody who's saying, we want to grow the pile higher. It's, like I said, fine, go through with this deal, but sooner or later, you have to break that partnership. You have to stop going along with the lies. Contamination is there. It is there. If either one of you, either Casella or the town of Southbridge, say enough with the smoke and mirrors, we're going to address it, maybe it'll get addressed. Thank you.
Mr. Buxton, if I may, I would like to address your comment. Because again, I find it, I am working for the town of Southbridge. I think all eight of us that are, the seven of us here, eight of us that are elected at this point, we are working for the citizens of Southbridge. And I am not in bed with Casella and they're not pulling the sheets off of me. Okay? Let's make that clear. Second is that in order for this liability future, this is protecting the town of Southbridge in the future, this partnership is with the state of Massachusetts, DEP. This would have never happened if DEP would have not made this happen. This is what we have to understand. This is nothing to do with meetings with Casella. This has to do with meetings with the state of Massachusetts, with the commissioner, in order for this to happen. This came straight from the governor's office. So in order for us to be good partners with DEP for future situations that may arise, this town needed to make this decision. And we hope that whether it passes tonight or it doesn't, either we're making a clear message to the state of Massachusetts, to the governor's office, to that commissioner, that we don't want to partner with you or we are going to partner with you and try to be a good neighbor, provide water to those citizens. But again, I understand that this is a very passionate subject and I appreciate the 20 years that you've been doing this. You know, it doesn't fall on deaf ears. Okay? I listen. There's plenty of counselors that listen. But at the end of the day, please don't use these references that, because again, I represent the town and I'm not in bed with Casella. I'm not. That's not me. I work for the citizens of Southbridge. And the reason we're doing this is because we want to be a good partner with the state of Massachusetts, DEP. This is part of the requirement that they're, if you want to make it, you know, language, that's part of, that's, again, this is where your concern is. We have many questions moving forward with the future of it, with the expansion, we all know that. But at the end of the day, this is not about Casella. This is about DEP's requirement and us being a good neighbor to those citizens that have been suffering. I just wanted to address you in that concern respectfully. I had to disagree with that comment. And again, I know other counselors have raised their hands.
It was a metaphor.
I understand, but those metaphors just...
They come out.
They irk me really bad, okay? Counselor Clements.
Thank you. I'm going to be honest, a year or so ago, when this was rearing its ugly head, I made public comment, and I commented in private too, that DEP, you know, there's a water problem. They seem to believe it's coming from us. If it's coming from us, chances are, as it's been stated here, it's coming from the online landfill. Back in the day, when we were allowed as a community to have a landfill, we followed all the rules and regulations that the state set. And now we may have a problem coming from a regulated landfill as the state allowed us. Back then, I said, why isn't the state stepping up? I said this to our rep, I said this to our senator, I said this to many people. Why isn't our state, who allowed us to follow the rules and regulations they set forth and have a landfill, which now potentially is contaminating someone's well, they needed to step up and do something? They have. They've put $5 million of the state's money, taxpayers' money, everybody's money, yep, to us, to little old Southbridge. And I am very pleased with that because otherwise, it's coming out of our direct pocket. So I'm pleased with this agreement. I think if our requirement for our part of what they, what they think is our responsibility is the bonding, a couple of percent, to save some money for the other business that they made a deal with, so be it. That's all we're putting out for our liability. If down the road, there is some ungodly reason that this bond doesn't, this does not get covered, okay, it's $5 million up too, depending on at that point, what's left over. That's still way less money than $13 million would have been. I don't foresee that. I don't anticipate that. That's the only reason I voted for this. But I believe the state did exactly what, I would have loved them to pay the whole thing. But they came up, they allowed us in the 70s to have a landfill. We followed all the rules and regs to that landfill and they let us expand that landfill. It continued on and on. They continued to allow that. So they stepped up, they've given us $5 million. I'm going to be a gracious recipient of that gift and work with the state because that's what needs to be done for the people of Charlton, that everybody gets up here and tells Southbridge we need to protect Charlton. We're doing that. We're doing that for the citizens here, protecting their financial assets, protecting their health and welfare and the citizens of Charlton too. I'm not really sure how much more we can do for anybody, but I'm in full support of this and I really don't have any more comments because I think this is, I'm proud of what's been done for this community. Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
I was thinking that, you know, I basically agree with a lot of what Counselor Clements just said, but also one thing I would like to say going forward is that I would much rather see this town do some, I hope that this, I hope that this particular deal becomes the beginning of an actual workable partnership with DEP so that we can actually get something done between us and the state and maybe the federal government to actually clean up that mess up there. Because it is a huge problem, it's going to be a huge problem basically forever. And I would rather see us partnering with the state and the federal government who are at least nominally answerable to the people. So I do agree with the point that you made, Kevin, about, to some degree, breaking the partnership. We do, we need to be, that's going to be the way we get to clean this mess up ultimately is by, with the state and the federal government. How are we going to do that? I don't know yet. I don't think anybody knows that. I personally, when this was going through, I was a little, a little leery of it, as you might have suggested when I was asking the question earlier, because I would have much rather seen it put in where DEP put up their money and Casella put it in escrow. But I can, I can kind of understand why they didn't do that. That doesn't mean I like it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just one small comment. I appreciate the council's input and I will agree that we need the DEP more than ever. We have been in, over our heads since 1996. Counselor Clements is right. I've, I've seen the history Andy Palatier did on the landfill. If you look at the first Smith Corona piece of paper that I believe it was DPW Director Bond sent out to the Mass DEPs, hand typed, we're taking 56 acres and turning it into a landfill. Thank you very much. In 1978. Laws, rules, regulations have changed and like you said, DEP is kind of saying, well, we didn't step in and correct the problem when it existed, so we'll give you $5 million and call it even. Like Mr. Steve said, I do agree that we still need DEP because we are still in way over our heads for a small town. Like Mr. Pruitt said, we're struggling with a $62 million budget. Casella is a $600 million corporation and we think we can sit in that little office over there in an executive session. I don't know if that's what you're doing tonight, but we think we can stand toe-to-toe with that corporation and we're equal partners and it's just not working out. I've seen it time and time again. Thank you very much. I'm tired.
Mr. Buxton. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council?
Mr. Buxton, that's exactly why the people need to stand together. We, the people, are far, far stronger than any corporation.
Thank you. Can you just please state your name and address for the record?
Erin Lapriori, 904 Wister Street. I also got three of these today. Three. I know that you say we're not in bed with Casella, but this, this makes it look like we are. Our part of future depends on this company. I'm going to ask this town council, let's be counterproductive, let's come up with our own literature and send it out to the people of this town, just as Casella did. I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't done speaking either.
She's, we're discussing Agenda Item Number 12. She was talking about the Casella pamphlet. So is it about Agenda Item Number 12 or the Casella pamphlet?
Really, Mina? I was speaking. That was rude. You cut me off. I didn't cut you off when you speak. I did not interrupt her.
The question, the question should be on Agenda Item Number 12 and not the pamphlet that was received in the mail. Thank you.
This has nothing to do with it? Nothing?
Ms. Lepierre.
Did you get this, Mina?
Ms. Lepierre.
I will, fine. Can I, can I make up my own signs? Can we be counterproductive? As a town council, can we be counterproductive? You started this meeting by saying, you know, you did not agree with this. This does not represent the town. Then I'm asking the town to be counterproductive and send out our own literature to clarify that we're not in bed with them.
If I may, if I may, this is not anything to do with Agenda Item Number 12. In that matter, we can discuss this after or at a later meeting, you can come up during citizens forum.
I'm hoping that Denise Clements puts one in her yard too. Okay? Because I don't think this is fair.
But I would, I would like to address...
Ron C. Manuel. I don't think this is fair. This is not a good representation of this town. If we're not in bed with... If we're not in bed with Casella, future's not looking so bright at a landfill.
Miss, I need you to...
I know. I've got to get back to Agenda Item Number 12.
Thank you.
I appreciate that you took the liability away from the town citizens, but do something better than this, please. Please. And I guess I'll forgive you for interrupting me so rudely.
Are there any citizens that would like to address the council with something that's on this, it's on this agenda specifically, please?
My name is Paul Zolos. I can't even hear myself. My name is Paul Zolos. I live at 60 Charlton Street. I love all of you very deeply. I was sitting home... Can you hear me, sir? I was sitting home, and all I want to say is, do not do this tonight, please. I'd like to see a full council. Why don't you wait till after the election? We could have nine councils, and we could vote for this. And we'd be a full council, and then we would have two-thirds vote. You all owe me a two-thirds vote, and we haven't done anything yet. Doesn't feel right to me. I'm one month away from the election, and we're jumping, winning, talking fast. I don't like it. Doesn't look good. I was sitting home. It doesn't look good to anybody. We know you're being bullied. Of course, Estee, I love you. You're not in anybody's bed. You're not in anybody's pocket. We know that. Everybody can think that. We always thought it, for 10 years. But I'll tell you, you're just rushing. Let's get a full council. This room is empty? I was home, I thought there was 500 people up here. You're doing this in an empty room, with no newspaper, no radio, and no television anymore. We start all three people up here telling us everything we knew every minute of the day. We were all... There should be 500 people up here when you make a vote like this. What does this tell you? That nobody knows what's going on. I was home. I paid attention. I didn't know what was going on. I'm not anti. I'm against a landfill, but I'm against this vote, being rushed, being bullied. The manager just admitted that the last deal, the last $5 million deal we did with these people, was a bad deal. Mr. San Angelo. No, you said you made the deal better, because it wasn't safe. So it was a bad deal, you made the deal better. You're not an attorney, but you're a smart guy. So you made the deal better. We can make this deal sweet. They're $500 million on the stock exchange, and we're borrowing money. You know who borrows money for someone who has, can get a better deal? Like, when a kid gets out of high school, his dad borrows the money for the car, because dad can get a better deal than a son can get from a bank in high school. So it's Casella in high school? No. They've been borrowing money for many, many years. They have a lot of banks... No banks in Southbridge. They've been in business in the south for 10 years, and they don't have a bank account at Southbridge Savings Bank. I can't even believe they don't have a bank account. I can't believe a town, a business can be in Southbridge without a bank account. But they got away with it, and they didn't get the loan at Southbridge Savings Bank. They've got big banks, you call them. Big banks? It's only $5 million. We don't need a big bank. They've got $500 million. Take some of that money, and the road was a lie. It's a road to the landfill. There's no industrial park up there. So the $5 million, the whole deal, was baloney. We know that. Okay, now we're going to do it again. It's baloney. Okay? Charlton got $30 million for the gas bill. They could put the pipes in themselves, really. $30 million. What are they going to do with that money? Get some water, Charlton. You know? But they haven't seen a Southbridge water bill. I think Casella should not only pay for the line, they should pay their water bill for 20 years. Those poor people, they've got swimming pools to fill, lawns to water, cows to feed. They're going to have some expensive water bills in Charlton, and they're not going to like it. And our DPW is going to be, is in charge of all of this? They don't have time to do our roads, but they're going to be building lines in Charlton. Well, I know there's a lot of questions here, but you know what? I like my DPW working in Southbridge. We've got a lot of trucks. They've got a small DPW, if they have one at all. We don't know. But our guys are going to be working in Charlton for two years. No? Well, because you didn't explain it. We're rushing, and you'll explain it later, in private, on the side, in a movie? Come on. Let's vote no, and let's wait, until we got nine good councilors that can run on this issue. And let's find out who's for and who's against while they're running. Put them in, and we can all do this together. We can't afford it. I had two signs stolen when I ran. Suddenly, they've got signs all over town, and nobody's stealing them. You know? They've got signs all over town. I had two big eight-foot signs stolen, one in front of the police station, one in front of these. We still don't know where they are. You know, where'd my signs go? And now they can put a sign on any sidewalk in town, anywhere, and mailings, and flyers, and trashcans, and everything. How about done?
I need you to stay to the bonding issue.
All right, well, I'm trying to stick to the issue, but you brought all these subjects up. I was home. I heard them all, and I said, I better get up there. Let's put the ducks in a row. The ducks aren't in a row. They've got more money than us. When did we vote to get $5 million, $10 million to help our kids, to help our seniors, to help our downtown, to help anybody in Southbridge, to help a real Southbridge business? We didn't save, we didn't save the AO. We didn't save Arrow. Arrow's just 500 jobs. We could have borrowed $10 million and made that building safe, and Arrow would have stayed. But we don't do this. But we're going to borrow money to save a failing landfill company. Landfills are over. The wave of the future is not build more landfills. The wave of the future is zero waste. Can I give five more minutes?
Do I have a motion?
I'd like five more.
All those in favor? Those against? Motion carries four to three.
Oh, calm down. I'm sorry, Estee. I didn't mean to touch on so many subjects. But that's how much in a dock I was. And I try to come to always pay attention. I talk to all of you on the street, or in clubs, or in bars, or wherever I can find you. I'm always talking about this. I'm always willing to bend and work and make a better deal. I don't see it. Please wait till we have nine councilors, the number we're supposed to have. I don't, I don't... This doesn't feel good, doesn't sound good. It's just like the other bad deal. We didn't vote for the landfill.
Point board, Mr. Chair. We're talking about bonding this agreement that we've made. Please rule out.
Mr. Zolos, this is your final warning. Stay to the Agenda Item of the bonding.
Where was I off the agenda?
You're talking about...
Previous.
Previous, past bills.
A bad deal, we can say. It's the same subject.
No, it's not. We're talking about the bonding issue.
Okay. Oh, wow. Jeez, I'm not a lawyer, but it sounded like the same subject to me. All right. I would say, wait. You're rushing. There's no reason to rush. The landfill, it's... They're going to be there. All right? Let them borrow their own money. Let them borrow their own money and build their own road. And let's be a real neighbor to Charlton and work together. Let's get Charlton here and Sturbridge here. We've never worked together. Charlton gave us this land. This land was given to us from Charlton, and now we're going to gouge them for water. They gave us the whole downtown. See? That's sticking to this subject. And we should be real friends to Charlton. I love everybody in Charlton. I love everybody in Sturbridge. And I don't think that you, the seven, have a right to do this without everybody saying it's a good deal, because it doesn't sound like a good deal. I agree with, I agree with you. Because this thing should take a little more time, and everything should be on paper, and you know, I just, I just think that, you know, we're rushing, and there's no reason to rush. I'm sorry I talk too much, but you brought all these subjects up, but I'll stick to one subject. You brought everything up. He brought the other landfill deal up, so I was able to talk about it, but I'm not a lawyer.
Not during this Agenda Item.
Next time I'll bring my lawyer. I'll say everything right. But please, think of what I just said. Slow down. They're not going anywhere. They've got a $1,000 a day attorney fighting a zoning board in Charlton. They got money. They got money. We shouldn't borrow money from rich people.
Mr. Zolos, you've hit your limit. Your time limit.
Borrow money for our kids.
Thank you. Councilor Steve?
I can't disagree with his passion, Paul. I said, I said what I said earlier, and I agree, I stick to it. But I think one of the things that this particular issue is addressing, getting water to people that cannot wait any longer. The people in Charlton's wells are contaminated. We all know it. They've been contaminated for far too long now.
That's right.
And that's why we're doing this. It needs to stop.
And let's make them hurry up and borrow their money. I think if we file suit, they have to freeze up their stock market funds. Yeah, they're going to...
Mr. Zolos.
They will drag us through court for years, Paul. Let's get this done.
Yeah, well, it's not done.
They will drag us through court for years.
There's no debating between the public and the councilors. So he was just addressing, so therefore, we're not going to debate tonight.
I'm going to go down to everybody downtown tomorrow anyway. Can't stop me. You just can't stop me.
Not a problem.
I don't know why you want them, but you can't.
Not a problem.
Going forward, we need to lean on the state, who is much, much larger entity than Casella is.
Thank you.
I joined Polowski through Jensen Street. You know, the more we talk about this, the more questions come up, and they're good questions. And I'm certain there's some misunderstandings. I cannot see how it's more than $5 million. And I wish, more than $5 million. $5 million is a good save. I'm not saying this is a bad thing necessarily. I just don't see how our liability exceeds more than $5 million, because this doesn't stop the lawsuits. We're providing the water. That's going to help us in court, because it's showing that we're putting in a good... My dad used to use the term "college effort," you know, like, really, we're showing good faith by putting that water in. Now, is, I know Councilor Clements answered this question when, or asked by Mr. Butler, but that, I get the $10 million. Is part of that $3 million, the $2 million study with Ty and Bond?
No.
Okay. Now, this, no, I'm just curious, because this 21, this misunderstanding with 21, was it 21G or E?
E.
Okay. That's the state law, right?
That's an environmental...
But there's a federal law. This is, I wish people would stop helping, and people understand this in the future, if this does get sticky in court. But we're dealing with a company that, in its annual report, tells its people that it's all our fault, as if we're the only ones that are going to have to pay. And then it's in their recent investment update in the last quarter. The DEP has told us clearly and twice that we both have liability, not because of 21E, but because of the federal law. We're the owner. It doesn't matter if it's from the old landfill, or if it's from where many of us think it is, from where there was a fire that went through the liner.
Mr. Polowski here.
No, this is why it's important.
But I need you to stick to...
This is very much to the point, sir. Because the town is being told, and we're being told up here, it's going to save $13 million. The court's going to go on, and half of $13 million is $6.5 million. Half of $13 million is $6.5 million. So we're saving our legal costs of one court. We're saving our legal costs, maybe. We're still being sued. This is not, people are not saying, oh, they're going to bring water in. I've talked to a lot of these people. They're expected, they want free water. Are we giving them free water? No, we're chipping, not charging them. This is not going to stop the court. Do not think this is going to stop the court case. Because I've heard this not once, not twice, not three times, not four times, but we've gone TV five times. We've been told this stops the liability. We've been told $13 million is going to save no more than $6.5 million.
Mr. Polowski, with all due respect, nobody has said that this is going to stop the liability.
It's saving up. No, you're right. I say correctly.
What we are...
It's going to stop possibly $13 million.
No.
I don't see it more than half of that.
Again, no. What this is doing is dealing with an issue now. There's a bill, as we speak, that is growing.
I get that. I'm not speaking against it necessarily. I wish you'd wait until after the election, but I'm not, I don't know enough about it. If I'm not, not everyone up there knows enough about it. But we're going to still have liability. The reason why so many people are upset is because we were given misinformation when we bonded for them in the past. For example, we were told it was Casella and not SRD. Now it's been clarified. God bless this man. I don't agree with him hardly anything, but he's always honest with us. That has not always been the case, so I'm very grateful for him. We, this is, I really wish you'd wait. I know what we say up here may not matter, but where, I wish town councilors and town staff would stop hurting us by claiming that the damage is from the unlined portion of the landfill. Because when they say that, and you set that up in the dais tonight, if it was, it'd be other chemicals over there.
If I may, Mr. Polowski, we have not said that the liability is coming from the unlined...
That the contamination is coming from the unlined portion of the landfill.
No, we did not make that statement.
I thought I heard that tonight.
No. There's a potential.
Potential, yes.
Just like there's a potential that it's coming from...
It's good that you are, so people are clear on it.
Because I want to be clear, because again, I don't, I don't...
It doesn't matter where it's from within the landfill.
I am breaking my own rule.
It's 50/50.
I am breaking my own rule.
And I'm going to stop talking. I just wish you'd wait until after the election.
The council's not going to debate, and I'm not going to debate.
I'm not trying to debate with you.
Thank you.
I just said $13 million number didn't seem... And I don't say anyone's intentionally trying to mislead either. I'm not saying that. But I think that's possibly double the amount.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on Agenda Item Number 12? Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. He's talking.
Mr. Palowski, we have a counselor that would like to address you.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say one thing really quick. So you made the comment up there that what you guys say up there doesn't matter. What you say up there does matter and what you say up there 100% weighs into our decisions. It doesn't mean that we're always going to agree. I personally think that anybody that's in Charlton that wants to take advantage of clean water needs that option as soon as possible.
I was inarticulate. Thank you for the correction because I want people... What I'm saying is, more specifically, I meant to say if I continue talking, I'm not going to change your mind. I probably should have chosen those words.
Okay. I just want to let you...
And as far as the chairman a few times, I'll be real quick. I mean, you've been upset. I don't think anyone's saying you've done wrong or you're in the pocket of Casella. I just think the town itself won't because of all the words. We're being bamboozled over and over again.
Mr. Palowski, thank you.
Well, that was... We appreciate you, Mr. Palowski. We appreciate everybody that comes up and speaks and it does weigh into our decisions. And I know that I've personally been swayed coming into a meeting based on citizen input in the past. I'm not saying that, you know, that's necessarily happening tonight, but we do appreciate the input that we get from the community.
Okay. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to restate something I said and just because I want to make it perfectly, absolutely clear for the record and the chairman said it. The town right now does not admit the contamination is coming from the landfill anywhere, the line portion, the online portion. We just don't know the answer to that question. Contamination, it is possible that the contamination is actually coming from someplace else in Charlton. We just don't know the answer. What we're doing tonight is reducing the risk to Southbridge taxpayers of it potentially coming from the landfill. I want to be really clear for the record because I've heard different counselors kind of say things and I needed to be clearer that even in the document itself that we negotiate an agreement, it takes no... No comments are there that anyone believes that the contamination is coming from the liability with the exception of DEP saying they think it's coming from the liability, but even they can't say they know for sure. So I just want to make that really clear, that the town assumes no liability whatsoever at this point because we just don't know the answer.
Thank you. Any other citizen that would like to address the council or any other discussion on Agenda Item Number 12? Seeing none, before we go to roll call, I would like to thank all those that have spoken tonight, though we might not agree or we disagree. I respectfully thank you for taking out of your time and coming here to talk and addressing us as counselors. Roll call, please.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Mano?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Agenda Item 13, Counselors Forum. We will start with Counselor Mano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to thank Ms. Doyle for reminding us that it's May Day, so happy May Day. Thank you, Maureen. Also, we do have the town elections coming up June 13th. It is a couple of weeks early of the year. That's what you voted on and that's what we got and I think you should all get out there and exercise your right to vote. I think you should ask questions about all the questions that are going to be on the ballot. You now know by watching this who is supporting question one and/or who is pushing question one.